I can get our Board of Trustees annual meeting started. We are recording this meeting, we're not live streaming, but the recorder will be made available. And I need to announce that we are going to go into executive session at the end of the open meeting to discuss negotiations with representative personnel, because doing so in open session could be detrimental to our position. And we will not be reconvening after executive session. If you saw the agenda, you'll see that part of our annual meeting has a lot of votes. So let's see, you know, get ready for a lot of voting, but basically for those of you that haven't gone through this, once a year, we have to make sure we check on our officer terms and our trustee terms. And if there's anybody whose terms is finishing, whether they're renewing or not, you know, that those are a lot of the votes that are going to be happening today. And I'm also happy to say that we were able to meet right before this meeting, Governance Committee, to wrap up the cycle based on our recruitment process for new board members. And we actually have a couple of board members to be voted on to join us today, one of whom is actually on the call with us today, so welcome. So we'll get through that. We need a roll call, correct, Sarah?
Yes.
Is it easier if you do it from your end while you're noting it on the?
I can, and I think is, um, the only one I don't see, is Bella here?
Not yet.
No, okay. So how about Dawn?
Oh, you're right. And I don't believe Dawn's coming, I think she mentioned.
Okay, so Jill Schaefer, Laura Burgess, Mara Webster, Nick Poirier, Raul Porus, Roger Jarrett, Sheila Kelly, Samini Sampath, Zachary Prescott are all are here.
And I would like to appoint a timekeeper, if anybody, there you go, Zach, thank you. All right, so I would, oh, Bella's on, Bella just joined.
Oh, okay.
And actually, right now it's time for me to ask you, did we get any requests for public comment? I don't see anybody on, so I'm assuming the answer is no. Nope, all right, so there's no public comment. I'm not sure why this vote is in here first, but I'd be happy to do it first, which is an officer reelection. So there's one person on this board whose term is coming up on June 30th for ending. And she's gracious enough to want to renew her term, and that would be Sheila Kelly. So I will entertain a motion to accept this second term as trustee for Sheila Kelly starting July 1st through June 30th, 2026. So it's a three-year term.
Motion to accept Sheila Kelly.
Second.
That was Samini seconded by Jill.
And Jill, okay, would you say your name, please? If I'm looking both, it'd be helpful, thank you. Jill Schaefer, okay, and I'll call the vote. Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Laura Burgess?
Yes.
Laura Webster?
Yes.
Nick Poirier?
Yes.
Raul Porus?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett? Roger Jarrett?
You gave a thumbs.
He gave a thumbs up.
Sheila Kelly, Samini Sampath?
Yes.
Zachary Prescott?
Yes.
All right, Dawn, everyone?
Yeah, Sheila abstained, if you didn't catch that.
Sheila abstained, okay.
Very gracious of you. So the motion passes, and I'm happy that we'll continue to work together, Sheila, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next vote is approval of the minutes from May 4th, that I'm sure everybody read from the packet. You got a motion?
Motion to accept the minutes.
That was Roger.
Second, Samini.
Thank you, great. Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Laura Burgess?
Yes.
Laura Webster?
Yes.
Nick Poirier?
Yes.
Raul Porus?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly?
Yes.
Samini Sampath?
Yes.
Zachary Prescott?
Yes.
That's everyone.
The motion passes, thank you. Next one, I'll turn it over to Zach for new faculty representative appointment. Just another vote for the next term.
Yes, I'm happy to announce that the faculty has elected Gregory Theos as my replacement, as I can only take two-year terms, and this will be my last meeting as faculty representative. I know Greg will do a fantastic job, he's an alumni from AMSA, he teaches in the CompSci department. He sadly can't be here tonight, he did send me an email saying that he wishes he could, but that something came up, but that he looks forward to the position. So if it's all right, I think it makes sense that I will make the motion that we approve him as my replacement as faculty board rep.
Vote here, all right, voting member is Zachary.
Roger, second.
Great, Theos. By Roger. All right, and go, Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Laura Burgess?
Yes.
Laura Webster?
Yes.
Nick Poirier?
Yes.
Raul Porus?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly?
Yes.
Samini Sampath?
Yes.
And Zachary Prescott?
Yes.
And that's everyone.
The motion passes, so congratulations Gregory Theos, we're looking forward to working with you. I believe you're from the same class as somebody else that's on the call today, Evan, if I get that correctly, so we'll.
Yes, that is correct.
We'll have two alumni, hopefully, after this meeting's over. And also, I'll take this opportunity to thank Zachary Prescott for his service as a faculty rep. It was a pleasure working together, I hope that Mr. Theos is as comfortable as a timekeeper as you have been, but you know, that role's always something for anybody willing to take that on. But appreciate everything you've done, we'll hope we continue working together, Zach.
Thank you, it has been an honor serving as representative.
Thank you, Zach, really appreciate your work over here on the board. And Class of 2016 raising the bar in terms of service back to AMSA, so. Pat Madja, that's part of your mentoring.
Yes, good call out. All right, the next representative appointment is the parent rep, and I believe that PTO has recommended for the second term reelection of Laura Burgess. So I can make that motion, right, so I'll make the motion for the reappointment of Laura Burgess for parent representative for a second term.
I'll second Bella.
Well, great, and let's do the votes, Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Laura Burgess? Do I vote for myself? You can, yes. Mara Webster?
Yes.
Nicholas Poirier?
Yes.
Raul Porus?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly?
Yes.
Samini Sampath?
Yes.
Zachary Prescott, everyone.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Congratulations Laura, looking forward to continuing to work together, I know it's a tough job to represent every parent and every opinion, but I think you've done a good job of bringing interesting topics to us when needed. All right, the next one is the only officer election. As you may remember, the officers, which are the chair, vice chair, secretary and treasurer, are elected for a two-year term, which started last year, so you know, most officers will continue to finish their term. With the exception of Jill Schaefer, who has expressed that she is graduating from the board and. I don't know Jill, if you want to explain to everybody, or you want me to basically say what we talked about on your tenure on the board?
Um, yeah, no, I'm just, I have a graduating senior and I'm gonna stay through the end of the summer, but I think September 1st I will retire, I guess you'd say. So it would make sense, yes, for me to step down from my secretary position.
So the timing is right, if we know now that Jill won't be able to finish her term as secretary, that we appoint a new one. So unless anybody wants to step forward, I already had the discussion with Sheila, who's willing to take over. So let me open up for the discussion before I make the motion. Anybody else interested in secretary role?
And when would this start, after September?
July 1st. Yeah. Yeah, I'm assuming that's preferable, Sarah, and you tell us if you have a.
No, I don't, I was just, just for the record.
Yeah, just to make it clean, you know, with the school year. Right, so July 1st and it's, actually, I guess the question is, is it a two-year term, or does it align with the other officers? One year?
It might not align.
Yeah, it would, the term would align with the other officers, so our officers always, it would be fulfilling the remainder of the current term.
Okay.
All right, so unless anybody has any discussion, I will make the motion, just to make it clear, to accept Sheila Kelly as secretary starting July 1st, 2023 until June 30th, 2024.
Second.
June 24th, okay, so it was Raul and Jill?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Bella?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Raul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Sheila?
I'll abstain.
Samini?
Yes.
Zachary?
Yes.
Everyone?
Thank you, so we'll have a new secretary in July, thank you Jill for filling that role. I sat on that officer's role, and I know it takes a lot of attention to detail, especially in the middle of meetings. And you know, Sarah makes it easy for us, but it's important for us to be the record of everything we do at the board. Now we have a trustee, a recommendation from Governance, which I'm happy to say we were able to meet right before this meeting to make that official recommendation. If you recall, we talked about our onboarding process, our board candidate to bring in new trustees. It's a process that we spelled out and formalized, and it starts in Governance, but then there's a nominating task force, which has been Roger, Samini and I, that we have met, we met with three candidates. You'll see in the agenda that we were prepared to vote for all three of them. However, I'm gonna say that Peter Bakula has asked that we wait to vote him in, just because of his availability and his involvement with other boards. He doesn't feel ready to give AMSA the time that it deserves, but he's definitely interested and open and excited to work with us and to be part of this board. So we're not gonna vote him in, however, I'm happy to say that Governance just voted on recommending the other two candidates, one of whom is on the call, Evan Ziborowski, if I pronounce your last name correctly, Evan, who is an alum, I think, you know, not to put pressure on you guys, but we will be making history by voting in an alumnus to be on the board, which is something very exciting and something that we said we wanted to do. And I, you know, I gotta say, Pat Madja, thank you for your role in this, you have been a great mentor to your students and this shows. And also, the comment that was already made, the Class of 2016 is gonna be very well represented on this board the next school year. So that will be the first vote for the trustee to be accepting Evan Ziborowski as a trustee. Any comments from anybody, and Evan, if you wanna say anything, this is the time, if you don't, then that's perfectly fine as well. But you know, everybody I've met with you has very, has been very happy with the discussion, I'm very impressed. I always say that every time I meet an AMSA student and alum, I've been impressed, and this is no exception. So with that, any commentary from anybody else, or Evan, please?
Well, yeah, I've just a couple of things to say, I just genuinely appreciate the flexibility of the trustees in, you know, getting all of these discussions underway and the opportunities to speak with, you know, the folks that I have thus far, has been an absolute pleasure, so I'm very much so looking forward to working with you on a more regular basis, whether it be Governance Committee, Education, so on, and yeah, thank you.
Excellent. Any questions for Evan, or any other comments from anybody that hasn't had a chance to meet him or discuss the role? All right, hearing none, I think we're ready for a motion.
Motion to vote Evan onto the Board of Trustees for AMSA.
So Samini, Raul will second that.
Eight. Great, Bella?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Raul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Samini?
Yes.
And Zachary Prescott?
Yes.
That's everyone.
And the motion passes, congratulations Evan, welcome to the board, and now. You're now, Sarah, just for clarification, does he become a voting member starting the rest of this meeting, or?
No, we have to wait tomorrow, tomorrow I will be sending in the paperwork, it's a resume and a request letter to the commissioner. And when they meet again, it usually takes about 30 days, and then he is a member. New voted in, they're members, but they are non-voting members until we hear from the commissioner.
Understood, I knew that, but thank you for the reminder.
Raul, quick question on process, given that we're gonna, it's gonna take a little time, takes the standard amount of time to get approvals. Did we want the official start date to be July 1st, or did you want to pick, say, our first meeting, our first scheduled meeting in July as their official start date?
It's usually July 1st, isn't it?
It's whatever date we set, the difference.
Assuming the approvals happen by July 1st, I think July 1st is fine. Do you see a benefit of it being later, like?
The, well, the advantage or just, the other advantage of being later is that our Board of Trustees terms are three years rounded up. So if they start directly on July 1st, they would be serving a three-year term. If they start in August, they would serve three years and 11 months, or a four-year term. So part of it would be what Evan would wish is to sign up for.
Honestly, that over the years, that has just become really confused and muddied the situation on dates and that.
That's only been if it's been a need.
Yeah.
If somebody comes in late, it's not usually predetermined.
Yeah.
So I think July 1st is fine, I think when people want to extend their terms, we can vote the other, the next three years. And I, at least what happened in my case, because I think that's what happened with me, I started at an off date. I still hit the seven-year limit before that roundup made any difference. So I guess that only helps with the trustee that's not renewing their term.
Well, no, it, because there, so our bylaws state that you can serve for at most seven years consecutive. So if you, trustee starts on July 1st, they would only serve, effectively serve six years consecutive, because you get, you should serve two, three-year terms before you leave the board. If they were to start any, any other date, they could serve two terms, the first one being three years rounded up, four years, and the second one would be three years. So.
All right, Sarah.
The original intention of that in the bylaws was to, when a, when a person was brought on the board other than during the annual meeting, sometime during the year, usually mid-year, that's what they did, they rounded up with that. Then we've had a few times when it's been sort of programmed this way, but I do think that July 1st is the appropriate time to start. I mean, it is six years, right, I don't think that, and that's just my, my comment.
Well, the, yeah, so, yes, the intent, the intent behind this roundup was so that all, all trustee terms would end on June 30th, rather than ending in the middle of the school year, which they had done.
Indeed.
Previously, so to our fixing the bylaws, and that was, that's the major goal of it.
Roger, wouldn't that happen anyhow, you're just saying instead of three years, it would be three years and 11 months. This has happened to me too, I will say that I, I found it confusing, because it wasn't very clear to me when my term would end. I think we, I would prefer to go with the recommendation that Sarah made, just based on the fact that I think the intent of the rule was a particular one, and we seem to be interpreting it differently than it was originally intended for, that's my.
Really, yeah, yes, I agree, the only advantage of picking a date other than July 1st is that a trustee who is elected will, by starting July 1st, will only serve for six years. Because they can only serve for two terms.
Which is really long time.
Well, and that's a purpose of.
Yes, it is.
Of term limits, right?
Right, so yeah, and that's a purpose of term limits anyway. All right, so I'm, sounds right, I understand your perspective, I'm gonna suggest, unless I, you know, we can put this up for a vote if it really comes to that, but I would suggest that we put it in as July 1st.
Yeah, just wanted to ask that upfront before we.
Yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, so we already took the vote, so I, I think this is just a detail of the start time. And of course, we're depending on when the these approval comes through, which we're expecting will happen by July 1st, if it's 30 days, because we're in June 1st now. Okay. The next trustee election is Darren Rose, who I know is not new to a lot of you, he's been working with the board for a while in the, correct me if I'm wrong, more in Development Committee and the, and the Imagine Committee, you know, in the Capital Campaign. And so he's definitely proven himself in service to the board. He is a parent in the school, he also expressed that even when his student graduates, he will continue to be a board member if his terms, you know, continue past his term. So he explicitly said he's not joining the board because he's a parent, he's joining the board, he centers on joining the board because he wants to get back to the school and continue to serve in a bigger capacity that he's already been serving for a while now. So, you know, we met with Darren, he, you know, he has a lot of good experience in nonprofit work, and that we can definitely use himself in, you know, as part of the board. Definitely, again, a recommendation from the Governance Committee and the nominating task force to move in forward as a trustee. Any questions, and he couldn't make the call today, but he wanted to, me to express that he's very honored that we're considering his candidacy, and he's looking forward to being part of the board. Samara, you're off mute, then do you want to add anything to that?
And I was actually just gonna say what you said, I spoke with him yesterday, and he said that he was, it was unfortunate that he couldn't make it tonight, but he's excited and looking forward to serving in this capacity.
Excellent.
I will make a motion to approve if there's no other commentary.
Second, Samini.
All right. Votes, Bella?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Raul? Roger?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Samini?
Yes.
And Zachary?
Yes.
That's everyone.
And the motion passes, so welcome Darren, and congratulations, you got two new board members. This is a good point to remind everybody that board recruitment is something we should always be thinking about as terms expire and people move on and, you know, things will continue to evolve. And actually, I don't know if I have another opportunity to do this, so I'm gonna do this now, one of the terms that's expiring is Nick's. And Nick has expressed that he will continue to help with the Facilities Task Force, and he'll be open to being part of the Advisory Council, but his term will not be renewing. So I want to thank Nick, you know, you've been a tremendous source of expertise, particularly with the building and with everything that has been top of mind for us in the last few years. And we've seen your family grow while you've been on the board, so we totally understand why you need time for yourself and to take care of them, so thank you for your service, and you know, is there anything you want to tell the rest of the board?
No, you know what, I, and well, I appreciate that, and everybody, I appreciate the opportunity. You know, it's been pretty crazy, right, I mean, when I started, it was like 2019, and I think I had one of those off years too. So it was a little bit more than three years, and so 2019, I think it was maybe August to September, I had no kids. COVID wasn't even a thing, and then next, you know, fast forward, six months later, COVID hit, and that was just something different. And then I think three months later, we had our first kid, and then fast forward to now, so we've got two under three. And it's been, it's been a pretty wild ride, and I will tell you that it's been fantastic being on the board, I've learned a lot. I feel like I've contributed really a lot to really the construction piece and solidifying the new home. I think that's really where my strong point is, and that's where I want to continue contributing to the school. But I can't put in the effort that I think the school deserves and the attention that the school deserves right now, just because the season of my life right now is a little different than it was three and a half years ago. But I do wanna, I do wanna see this project through, so I do want to be part of the Facilities Task Force as far as being an advisor and anything that I can do on the Advisory Council, I definitely want to be a part of. But I do appreciate everybody welcoming me to the AMSA family, and I hope that 10 years from now that I can get back on and have one or both of my kids in the school, but well, 10 years is a long time, that's, you know, a lot's happened in the last three and a half years, so we'll see what happens. But I really appreciate everybody on here, and I definitely have learned a lot, so thank you to everybody.
Thank you, Nick, and again, thanks for your service and everything you've done, I think AMSA will be in a stronger place 10 years from now, and thanks in great part to everything you've done in the last three and a half years. So it is our job to make sure that continues to be the case, so the school will be here in force for when it's time for your kids. Excellent, so with that, one thing that maybe I should have brought up when we voted in Evan and Darren, a part of the onboarding process, which by the way, in Governance, we have kind of formalized and documented an onboarding process in a way that hasn't been before, so this would be a great way to test it. One of the things that we talked about that I almost forgot, and thank you Samini for reminding me, is that we assign buddies, basically, an existing board member that has already been on the board for at least a year, volunteers to pair up with each, with each one of the new board members. So we haven't really discussed who that would be for Evan and Darren. I'm gonna throw it out there, Samini, sounds like you're opening, open to being Evan's buddy? Yes, you're on mute, but it sounds, you're nodding.
Yes, yes.
All right, and just to be clear, what that means is, you know, one point of contact for the new trustee to ask questions, to clarify, and you know, walk through some, you know, there's some Governance things that we need to comply with as trustees that sometimes can feel daunting. So having somebody to ask and guide through the process is helpful. So I will say, Evan, you know, you'll connect with Samini, Samini, you know, reach out to Evan. And then Darren, I'm looking for volunteers. I know there's some of you have worked closer with Darren already, I don't know, there you go, Samara, you're, you okay with the buddy for?
Oh, Raul knows how to nudge over there, thank you.
I, you know, if we were in the room, I'd be looking at you, but you know, I was actually looking at you, you can't tell.
I could feel, I could feel the burning.
So Maura will be Darren's buddy, and Samini will be Evan's buddy, all right, excellent, I mean, we're all each other's buddies, but you know what I mean. All right, we're almost done with votes, I promise. The next is committee chairs, so my recommendation is for us to maintain the current slate of committee chairs. We get in the Education Committee, Roger, who I would say he's, is on the chair role as, I would say in a temporary position while we have somebody else from the board, that, you know, if anybody's interested in joining that committee and participating more. And, you know, maybe Evan, that could be a role for you, but we can talk about that offline. But for now, you know, I'm proposing to continue with the current slate, which is Roger in Education, Maura for Development, and Roger being the treasurer automatically as the Finance Chair, and then Sheila for Governance. So that's a proposal on table, if anybody wants to step forward to chair any of the committees, feel free to propose otherwise, but if not, we can just take a vote to adopt that slate, which is basically no change from what we had this year. So I'm here in silence, which means I'm gonna make a motion to approve the same slate of committee chairs.
And I'll second that, Sheila.
Who did that?
Sheila.
Oh, Sheila.
Sheila, okay. All right, Bella? Alright, Bella.
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Raul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Samini?
Yes.
And Zachary?
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you. The next vote has to do with the executive session minutes. Uh we actually haven't had to have one of these votes in a while, so it might be new for some of you. But uh according to open meeting law, we keep minutes in executive session and those minutes, minutes are privileged to the board. They're not shared. They're not part of uh open record. However, when the reason to go into executive session no longer exists, we, and we review this every six months, so now's the time where we're reviewing this. Then we vote to release those minutes um in case anybody asks for them. So basically, those minutes become available for anybody that requests them. So we do have one set of those minutes. Uh any minutes of executive sessions that we have entered having to do with the uh union negotiations are not being released because we're stolen those negotiations. But there are other executive session minutes from the last uh six months that we are voting to release. So Jill and I review that, so the chair and the and the secretary review them to um for correctness. Um so we're basically um recommending to the board that we release those executive sessions from the ED contract negotiations, which were the ones that are the the reason for that, since we already have a signed contract. It's no longer um no longer needed to be kept um privileged. So that is the vote. Any questions or commentary about that? I appreciate. This is the first time we're voting on such a release for many of you. But we used to have more executive session before. No questions? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to uh release the executive session minutes or to, yes.
That was Roger.
Second, Samini.
Votes Bella?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Laura? Yes. Laura?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Raul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Samini?
Yes.
And Zachary?
Epstein.
Epstein. Okay.
The last two votes, I'm gonna turn it over to Roger because they have to do with decisions made in finance or suggested by finance uh to implement our investment policy. Roger, you want to talk about those last two votes?
Sure. So we have two votes that for uh coming out of finance that both are recommended by finance. Uh just do a quick summary first and then go down to the individuals. So the first vote is just to, is to establish a brokerage account at Fidelity. Is it, we need board approvals for anytime we establish a new account. Um the second is is to enter into an agreement with uh First Citizens, the S SVB Division of Wealth Management Agreement to invest our money in T bills. So um. And the finance committee reviewed this and uh and recommends to move forward with both of these.
You need two votes, though.
Yes, it'll be two votes. Um questions, particularly about the second one, and the first one is procedural. But the second one, I've opened, opened the questions on either of them.
No, I think my understanding is, you know, we we had an investment policy that had been discussed over the last year or so that even establish asset classes and whatnot that we'd be willing to invest in, but it doesn't force us to invest in any kind of security. So it's just a guideline. So we're, we're basically starting to execute that by opening, you know, getting advice from, from the bank on that.
Yes, well, in fact, this is even more tailored that our initial investment will only be in treasury bills. Although our investment policy allows us to invest in other items as well, so this is the most conservative of the investments. See, if there are no other questions, I'll pass it back to Raul to lead the votes.
Alright, so I'll take the motion for the first one, which is for AMSA to create a brokerage account at Fidelity for the purpose of implementing our investment policy. And the signatory authority on this account will initially be Leanna McLaren, our Director of Finance, and Roger Jared, our Treasurer.
Sorry, can I ask a question before? I apologize. It just occurred to me. I think this, in the brokerage account context, again, it goes back to um what types of insurance typically covers those kinds of broker brokerage accounts?
So brokerage account is insured up to five hundred thousand dollars via the SPISIPC or S. Um in addition, the the money will all be invested in treasuries as well.
So is part of strategy making sure that the account itself does not exceed five hundred thousand in any given?
Uh no, no, since it'll be invested in treasuries.
So the rep, so capped at five hundred K and then treasuries?
Uh no, so all the, all the money will be invested in government, uh US government treasury bills.
Okay, thank you.
Now, the brokerage account is just a vehicle used to transfer money so that it can be put into treasuries and then to transfer money so it can be pulled out.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody, I read the the motion, but I I was
Yeah.
Looking for somebody to make the motion.
Okay.
Motion to open up a brokerage account at Fidelity with uh Leanna and Roger as uh signatory.
Alright, Raul will second that.
All right, votes Bella?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Raul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Samini?
Yes.
And Zachary?
Yes.
Everyone.
The motion passes. Alright, the second vote, I'm looking for a motion to enter into a wealth management agreement with the SVB Division of First Citizens Bank to invest in T bills for our investment policy.
I will make that motion. Roger?
And Raul will second that, since I'm the only one off mute.
Okay, votes Bella?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Raul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Samini?
Yes.
And Zachary?
Yes.
And the motion passes. And that's it for the votes section of our agenda. I I promised newborn members that most board meetings do not have this many votes. Uh this is just because it's our annual meeting and there's a lot of uh things that we have to take care of. Um with that, I'll move it on to a capital campaign update from Maura.
Um I will be very quick. Um we don't have a ton of updates since the last, um since our last meeting. But um and I'm pretty sure Ellen's probably gonna share the news about Cummings. So I will actually just say what Ellen is going to share is actually really a good indicator while not directly for the capital campaign. Um just a really good um, it gives the, gives the capital campaign good strength and credibility in securing funding moving forward. So it's actually a really, it's a good thing all around. So I will leave it at that and yield the rest of my time to Ellen.
Thank you very much. Ellen, the ED uh update.
Yes, here I am. Let me pull this up. Thank you, Maura. Alright, well, nice to see everyone this evening and um it's June first, hard to believe. But here we, here we are at the end of the school year. Gonna give you a quick update on where we are with MCAS. Been a very long MCAS season. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the Cummings Grant, as Maura mentioned. Senior Awards Night, uh congratulations to our seniors uh who received awards that night. I'm gonna talk about that for a minute. And then just today, we announced our valedictorian and salutatorian for the class of twenty twenty-three. Um I have a construction update for you and that's actually most of my update this evening. Um and then upcoming events because graduation is right around the corner. So all we have left actually is the um Biology MCAS, session one and two, June sixth and seventh. Um so we are, we are getting ready for that. For those of you who have heard, we we definitely have um some AC issues, as you know, in the science um wing of the upper school. And so that was, is something that we're definitely thinking about, um is making sure those those students get all the prep that they need. And those rooms up there are warm, um waiting for that new unit to come in. But definitely, um I let the Department of Education know uh today that we have an issue there. And hopefully, it will all be settled by June sixth and seventh. So here we go. We did, we got the Cummings Grant. This is the fourth time we've actually applied um to Cummings. We have um, we have received a hundred and five thousand dollars. Will be split over three years, thirty-five thousand dollars per year. And this is gonna be used um for the STEM program, for the collaboration that we, program that we've been doing with U UMass Lowell. The first time we actually applied for this grant was uh when Scott Jurey was the department chair. Um and it's morphed over over time. Um and it's, we we've been doing a collaboration program in the summer for a couple of weeks with UMass Lowell for about, this will be the third year. Um and it's a great program. It's gonna um involve fifty students, uh most from AMSA, but from outside of AMSA as well. If there's students who are interested in participating, um these fifty students will spend some time up in the UMass Lowell labs. They work on engineering um projects. This uh program will be led by uh Christie Jagowski and um Padmaja Bindaru. So very happy about that. And Jeremy Morris is involved in this as well. Uh we hope that in future years, we will also um, we will involve the math department and physics as well as we continue to kind of hone on exactly, hone in on exactly what we want this program to look, look like. Uh because we, really, we just notified uh this, was this week or last week? Um we're, they're gonna be doing a repeat of the program that we did last year. But um it's gonna grow in future years and this is a super exciting, um very prestigious nonprofit um grant that we received. And um just to Maura's point, um although this money is not for the capital campaign and it cannot be used for the capital campaign, um it really, uh it's a very, very well-known grant in the area. Um and it it will be, it is already posted very prominently on our website. If you Google Cummings or even if you look on the front page, you'll see that there's a whole page devoted to this. And that's one of the requirements actually of accepting the grant. There's a number of things that they they ask us to do. So um this is exciting. Um it it will be an opportunity. We're on multiple lists, uh actually on the Cummings Grant website as well uh for other organizations who may be interested in investing in AMSA to um say, wow, well, they got a Cummings. And um they're worth looking at a little bit more closely. So um that is the exciting part about the Cummings as far as the capital campaign, future fundraising is concerned. Alright, we had our senior awards night on May eighteenth. It was a lovely evening. Some of you were there. Um thanks to uh Christie and Matt Anderson and and Lynn McCluskey is always the backbone to these types of events. I put on a great, a great um, a great evening for everyone. Uh there was music, uh a cappella and and the jazz band. It was, it was just, it was a lovely evening. Then there was department awards that are given out. So, you know, a couple of math awards, a couple of English awards, um all the way down. And um those awards will be, will be published as well, but there's this whole, whole list of them. And there's also some um scholarships that are given out that night, including one from Walker Development. So thank you, uh Nick. Uh Kia Kahaa Award recipient this year, and Kia Kahaa was an award that Anders and I put together in two thousand and seventeen. Um was, was given to um Shauna um Sprow. She's a, an amazing young woman who joined AMSA in ninth grade. And our Eagle Award, which is um AMSA's most prestigious award, was awarded to our very own Maddie Webster, Maura's daughter. Um very proud of of Maddie and and all um, all the work that she's done at school. One of the the great parts about the Eagle Award is it's not just, not that Maddie isn't a wonderful academic student, she certainly is. But it's, it's also a school spirit, someone who really has, um and puts a lot of effort into making AMSA a better place. And um I, I can't imagine a more deserving um young person than than Maddie for for this year's award. We also, as I mentioned, announced the valedictorian and the salutatorian this year. And so we have um Hannah Veraka, that's the valedictorian, and Vrana Rumalik, who is the salutatorian. And both will be speakers at our graduation. Very proud of them. It's amazing um the kind of work and the level of work um our students, um our students are, are put their complete dedication and and passion into. Um I will say, just like every year, um these, um this is strictly based on GPA. Um there's not, nothing else that's considered here. It's strictly GPA, so it's, it's a clear number thing. Um and, you know, we have twenty-five, fifty, very, very worthy um students. Um but um, you know, we have to, we pare it down to, down to two. So these are our two for this year. Lot of competition um in this class and every year at AMSA. Very, very proud of them and their hard work over the years. So here's a little construction update. And what I'm gonna be talking to you about a little bit is the timeline um here for the summer work, for the most part. Um then I'm also gonna show you some, some photo, some photos of um, you know, the outside of the building and and different materials and things um that we'll be working with. But initially, I wanted to talk about the um, the schedule. Because we've been talking for a long time that, that the um, you would all be voting on the GMP, which is the guaranteed maximum price, um after the bidding is done, that you would be doing that in August. And that has actually changed. It's going to be um, that in early September now. And I wanted to go over a little bit of information with you on why that, why that is. Um as you can see from this chart, and Bob Baldwin put this together for us, it's been reviewed by Nick already. Um is that the architects, the, the first section here is, these, these are the dates that were given to us um that was presented to all of you back in August of twenty twenty-two. And the current schedule, as I said, it's about three weeks difference and um, and the new dates are on the far right-hand side. So you can see that the architects have, they are due to complete the drawings on the twenty-first of June, which is a date I've mentioned a number of times. Um that was the date they gave us last August. That is the completion date now. They are on schedule. Um and so that has not changed at all. There was um an internal quality control review by the team. That has been added in and it's two weeks. Um and that will be completed by July sixth. So that was two weeks that were added in there. Um there's a bid period for the subcontractors. That's um the same number of weeks, but obviously pushed out by two. And then there's the finalization of the um, of the GMP by the construction manager. Now, we originally had that down for two weeks. At that point, we had not um finalized things with um the construction company and they have asked for an extra week. So they asked for them to to have a third week instead of just two weeks. And this is, that what they'll do is pull all those bid numbers together for the plumbing, for the HVAC, for the elevators. It's, they're all broken up into different contracts, um which will be placed out on bid. And they will pull all that numbers, those numbers together. And that's what is, is, comes together as the guaranteed maximum price, which is the price that all of you will be, will be voting on. So they will be working on that. Then they'll negotiate for the final GMP, August 16th through September 9th. And then they will be asking for your approval, not on August 17th, '23, but on September 10th, '23. So you can do one of two things. You can, you know, call a special meeting for September 10th to, to take that vote, very important vote. You can, you can wait until your regularly scheduled September board meeting. I did confirm that with Bob. Or you can just move your September meeting to September 10th, so that that can get done as quickly as possible. So the, you know, the construction drawings are exactly on schedule. There's just been a little, a couple of other tweaks to the schedule that has brought it out three weeks. And there's a few notes there. I know that Nick is also familiar with this. So if you have any technical questions about the timeline and why it's changed, feel free to ask us. And you can ask us now if you'd like.
Yeah, and I can add a little color to that, too. So I think with the architect completing the construction drawings, that both Answer, who is the OPM, and then WT Rich, who is the, the construction manager at Risk, was really the, I guess, call it the general contractor, who's going to be responsible for this. They wanted two weeks to personally review the plans, to make sure that there weren't any gaps. Because keep in mind, WT Rich and Answer have been looking at these plans every step of the way. So because that's what they do, they're looking for certain gaps in the plans. And so as, as a team, we felt like that was pretty good. And then when it came down to the two weeks versus the three weeks for the finalization, I can tell you, there's a lot of effort and there's a lot of work that goes into gathering all the bids from every single trade. And there's, ultimately, there's probably 25 trades involved. And they're going to have three to five bids from every single trade. And so the idea is that the construction managers have to go through every single bid and make sure that they're including everything. If they're not, it's, it's called leveling the bids. And so what they want to do is they want to go through and level the bids. Because ultimately, what they have to present to the team is a bid package that shows all of the subs, all of their quotes, the recommendation from, from our team as to who they want to choose from each subcontractor. And that extra week, I think, it doesn't do any different. It doesn't really affect us one way or another. But to give them that extra week to be able to provide us with a package that is complete as it can be, I think is very important in the grand scheme of, of the entire project. Especially where we all know that the budget's pretty tight. And so that everybody on our team, including Answer, including WT Rich, they all understand as well. So I think that they're going to be taking a look at that. And if they start to see that the number's creeping, they may go back and start asking for alternates, looking for ways to get us to the number that we're comfortable with. One thing I will say is, once that budget gets issued to the school, I think that there should be, I mean, certainly, as, as a team can decide. But I think that taking a look at it early and often, I think is going to be, is going to be good, that you don't want to wait until the end. I think that there's going to be questions that come up. If we're under budget, then I think there's going to be a lot less questions. If we're over budget, I think there's got to be a lot of strategy that's involved in it. And so I would say not to wait. I think that this is one of the most important, if not the most important and pivotal moments for AMSA. And so I think that there's got to be a lot of effort and a lot of time put aside between the months of August and September to review this in, in great detail and make sure that everybody understands what it means. And that was something that part of the Facilities Task Force was trying to go through and figure out a way that is going to make, to, to put it in a package that makes the most sense for everybody to fully understand. Because it, it can get very technical, where you just kind of get lost in the, in the numbers. So I had mentioned to Bob that I would work with him to figure out a way to present it in such a way that it just makes sense to the average user.
Thank you, Nick, that's great. Sheila, did you have something? You just popped up on my screen. No, okay, all right.
Yeah. And we can talk about the schedule of the board meeting later, but just two specific questions. One is, the September 10th is the date that the, the packet, for lack of a better term, whatever we're going to review is going to be ready, correct? So that...
Yes, yeah, this will go, as Nick mentioned, this will go through Facilities Task Force multiple times. It should also go back and forth to Finance as well. Eventually, it will be recommended from Finance in the Facilities Task Force to the Board. And that's where your, your final meeting will be. But yes, and, and I think you do it just the way we did it in March, where anyone who would like to come to those finance meetings, right? And be a part of that and hear this play out, is more than welcome to, to do that.
And then would delaying the decision mean a delay in the project's start date?
They will not start this project until all of you vote to accept that GMP. And just, you know, I won't be around when all of this comes, comes down to play. But just remember, change orders, there's, there's contingencies, but those contingencies that have been built in are getting smaller. And remember, they will always be change orders. Little things will come up, could be some bigger things to come up. And so you're, you know, you're going to want to make sure that's also part of your, your thinking and planning.
Yeah, and the reason I ask, if, if there's, if we need to build in time for everybody to review, so if we're saying September 10th is the earliest we can have the details, even though we've been talking about it and being part of the discussion, the final decision packet or whatnot is on the 10th, should we have the meeting on the 10th? Or wait, so by the way, the 10th is a Sunday, which might make it easier to have a meeting. I'm just, I let it, it's a Sunday. But if we meet like in the 14th, would those four days make a big difference in, in, you know, timelines and whatnot?
Sure, it gives people more time to meet in more committees. You know, I just want to, we've been talking about August. And I just want to make sure that it was clear to everyone that it's not August anymore. And what happens in August and September, my guess is going to change from anything that we can actually predict right now. You know, Leanna is well-versed in all of this as well, and will be able to, to monitor things and keep it on track. I know that Nick is more than willing and happy to continue to help her. And they'll get Lisa on board on this. And, and everyone will do the best job they can to give you the information that you all need in order to make this very, very important decision.
And Raul, to your point, what I had mentioned with Bob, was that it would be good for our representatives to get us a, a schedule, right? A preliminary schedule that shows us for our timeframe that we need to make a decision, right? Because we need to understand, do we have a week to make a decision? And do we have two weeks or three weeks or whatever that is? Like, when does it start to impact what that schedule is? Or in theory, when does it start to impact that schedule? So that was something that I had asked for, because we need to know when the decision needs to be made, right? And so I think that that's a big thing. And then understanding too, that if we, if we are going to delay the decision, say by a week, because we either, I guess I'll back up. I think one important thing here is that anybody that doesn't fully understand, that wants to make a meaningful vote, should attend some of the earlier meetings, right? Just to fully understand, because I've, from what I've seen in some of the meetings that we've had, is that there's a lot of education in those meetings. And that, so that the meetings don't actually end up being, I guess, from a, from a decision standpoint, they don't end up being productive. From an education standpoint, they do end up being very productive. But ultimately, time is money. And when we have an idea of what we have for a timeframe, and we should have that sooner than later, just so that we know that every day that we don't make a decision, it causes X amount of day delay, that, that we kind of back into that and that we start to figure out who needs to meet when and who needs to see what information, so that everybody can feel comfortable making decisions when it comes time for voting. So we, we have talked to Bob about that. And that is something that, that either Answer or WT Rich is going to be providing to us, so that we know, again, it's how long do we have to make a decision? If we don't make a decision by that day, what is that implication as we move forward?
I have a question. So there's been, I think what I heard is that there's going, the Facilities Task Force is going to have, get some information, and there might be some back and forth, and Finance Committee might get involved. When does, when does that happen? That's happening before September 10th, correct?
Yes, that will need to happen before September 10th. But we won't have, they, they have time. There's two weeks there that they have to, to kind of negotiate and come up with the final numbers. And then that will come to us. So yeah, you know, looking at this, you're probably not voting on, on the 10th being a Sunday, but you're probably not voting there. You know, it may take a couple of weeks then to get through all those committees.
I guess that's what I'm asking, like, you know, sometimes we're given information a day before a vote. And I feel like this, we need, we need a little bit more time.
We had lots of time in March. We had multiple, multiple meetings. And I suggest, and I know that, that you will do the same thing again this time. I wouldn't worry about that.
Okay.
Yeah. Following up on Bella's question, you'd meant, and you'd mentioned that, you know, at what, at what point would be the earliest that Finance would start having data that they could work with?
They, it says here on the schedule that they will have the, they will have the final GMP by the September 9th, and then they would like an approval shortly thereafter.
Right, but would, so we would be the earliest that we would, are you saying the earliest that we would be able to start working with the data would be September 10th? Or is there preliminary?
Somewhere in there.
Preliminary stuff that we could get, say, I don't know, if August 26th is that, you know, I would understand that things are still moving, but...
No, I wouldn't expect that then. If they are able to negotiate it quickly, they have two weeks to do it in their schedule. If they're able to negotiate it quickly, you might see the numbers more quickly. But they have until the 9th, according to their schedule. They do think they'll need two weeks to do it. And then you'll need to set up your meetings, just the way we did in March, so that everyone has time to look at it. It gets viewed by the task force to Finance. And then when people feel comfortable, it's, it will then have to go for a vote to all of you. You can decide what those dates are, you know, when you have more information. But like Nick said, you know, we, we had thought that part of the, the issue with the schedule and the change was part of the time that we, we, that we put the project on hold because of what happened with SVB. That, that was an assumption on our part, and it wasn't correct. There was a couple of weeks of time that were padded in there. So we didn't actually lose time on the schedule due to what happened with SVB, even though we, we, we were the ones that put it on hold. So there may be some time in here, Roger. I don't know that all of a sudden it's not going to be done on the, the 28th of August. But I would expect it to be done on these dates and, and work with these until you get something else.
All right, well, thank you, that answered my question.
And Roger, I think the other thing, too, is, I, I think, you know, between Facilities and, and Finance, to try to get an idea of where the number's falling and not holding anybody to it, I think will be, will definitely be helpful for everybody, or at least for those task force to understand. Because if it's falling within our budget, then that's one thing, or under budget. But if it's, if it's slightly over, we've got a lot of decisions to make. If it's majorly over, then we're, you know, maybe there's not as many decisions to make. But I think it would be good to get an idea preliminarily where we at once they start pulling the numbers together, how do they stack up? Because everybody should keep in mind that there's been multiple renditions of budgets put together. And so we've approved to move forward with the, the creation of the construction drawings based on certain budgets, in the hopes that we're going to be able to hit those budgets. And I think that it's important for the team to get an idea before everything's finalized, like, are we near there? Are we in the ballpark? Because if we are, then that's great, right? But if we know right away that we're not, then I think that that's something that, that the Board in the school should be talking about, you know, what the alternatives are, to go from there. Because again, it's one of those things, I feel like if it were me, I would definitely want to know, guys, are we close? Are we, are we that far off? Are we under? Because if we're under, I think that the, I think that the votes are going to be pretty easy, right? If we're close, it's going to be tight. If we're over, I think we've got some tough decisions to make. So having an idea without being presented with the final writing, you know, and then being asked to make decisions within a week or whatever that ends up being. And I don't know that, I'm just throwing it out there. But I think it's important to get kind of a gut check on where we're at as the numbers are coming in. So that would be something that I would recommend that we would want to ask for. Again, not holding them to it, but they see the numbers coming in. How are we looking? You know, what, what do we have to anticipate for, for review time in, in board meetings?
Can I make a suggestion between, you know, in mid-August to September 10th, that we do have some sort of finance educational meeting where we talk about our, our resources? I feel like the Finance Committee, we have been talking about, like, and setting up some sort of schedule or that we can kind of walk through to just say, you know, what kind of funds do we have available towards the building project? And I think maybe doing that, some of that preliminary work before we get the, the final, you know, quote, might be useful for, for the entire board.
Yes, I agree.
Well, Roger, you can call those meetings.
Yeah, I'll take care, I'll take care of that. So Nick, when, when do we, when would be the, given the schedule, when would be the point where we would be getting the ballpark estimate?
So if I, if I had to guess, the finalization of that GMP for 8/26, I mean, I would like to think that the beginning of September, because if they're finalizing it, and along the way, they're negotiating it. Not, and, and again, I didn't ask the question, but I'm not sure if the negotiations are with the subcontractors for their best and final, or, or if it's a negotiation between our OPM, Answer, and WT Rich. I'm not exactly sure who that, those negotiations are with.
I think it's the bidding, Nick. I, it's the, I think it's the, the bidding with the actual subs.
Sure, so to me, that's the qualification going back and forth. Are you including this? Are you not including this? Please add this. So I, I mean, I would like to think that the beginning of September, we should have a pretty good idea of where those numbers are starting to fall. Again, not with everybody having the understanding that they're not the final numbers, to make sure that they're not giving us a low number. But they do have, like I said before, we have a lot of renditions in the evolution of these, these estimates. And this is the big one. This is, this is the make or break for us. And so to get an idea that we're either around budget, under budget, or over budget, I think is, I think that that's going to be helpful for the Board to prevent sticker shock, right? Because I see it a lot, and it's, you know, it's, it's not really what you say, it's, it's, it's how you say it. And I think that going through a process and understanding where it's coming in at, so that we can plan ahead for what's to come, because we're going to have to speak with the banks, right? We're going to have to, there's, there's a lot of different conversations that come up. If this thing hits right on budget or under, the conversations are way easier, much easier. And I think the approval is going to be a lot faster. If it's right there or if it's just over, those are going to be some tough decisions. If it's way over, then I, I think it's going to be a quick decision, right? But we do have to understand what all of the implications are along the way with the bank and the loan. And I'm sure that Leanna has already had these conversations. I know in Finance that we've, you know, we've talked about this. So that when information does make it to the Board, that it's been vetted out very thoroughly. But back to one of my points, I think, you know, having some, opening it up to those meetings to the rest of the Board, just because we want to avoid in situations where we have to make decisions. I feel like transparency and the flow of information is something that is so key, and the communication is so key in making decisions, that everybody feels comfortable. You know, this isn't just a decision on, you know, approving the meeting minutes. Had, you know, did you read them, yes or no? And everybody's saying yes, and we're just going to, sure, go with the flow. Maybe you didn't read them. I'll tell you, I'm guilty for that sometimes. But point being, this is a huge, huge step for the school. And so I think... And so I think that everybody needs to be involved. If you don't feel comfortable, that it's up to you to make yourself feel comfortable and attend as many meetings as you, as you can, so that you are comfortable and ask as many questions before we get to that final vote.
Yeah. So I, I think I can summarize everybody's intentions and, you know, anybody correct me if you disagree, but we want to ensure two things. Number one is that the board doesn't delay the project. Because we're, we're the last step of the process and there's a risk of that happening if we wait to make a vote for too long. But at the same time that we take the vote when we're ready to take a vote and we know, are comfortable with the details, which is why I think we're doing everything we can to get those details as soon as possible. And so I, I think there's a lot of ideas that have been thrown out there. So I, I'm sure the facilities task force will act on that to say, you know, maybe education sessions or, you know, maybe those are the finance meetings and at least for one, I'll keep an eye on all those finance meetings between now and August to, um, make sure that I'm attending, so I'm familiar with it. Um, but yeah, we, we just want to make sure we have the details as quickly as possible, as quickly as they're available. So we can make a decision as quickly as we can.
And I think too, in some of these preliminary meetings, is trying to understand, um, what information everybody collectively needs to see in order to make that decision, because there's so much information out there and I think you can get lost in the numbers. And so as a team, trying to figure out exactly what the numbers, you know, what information needs to be seen so that people feel comfortable in making a decision. You have to think we've got a, 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 um, construction manager at RISK and WT Rich, we have an OPM in Answer. We also have our OPM in Bob Baldwin. So we have three different layers here that can disseminate the information any which way that the board feels they need to see it to be able to understand it and make a decision that everybody feels comfortable with. Um, I would say do not be afraid because we're paying a lot of people a lot of money. And so don't be afraid to ask them to do some work.
Yeah. And any, any one of those would be happy to come to a board meeting and talk to you and explain things further to you as many times as you would like. Um, we, I'll set the next slide or are there other questions out there?
It would just be useful for the postings for the finance committee to come to the whole board. So we remember that we're going to attend that meeting. I'm not always fully aware of when the finance committee meetings happen. I can go look up the calendar, of course, on Board on Track, but just a way to keep us if somebody, if it's possible, please drop that. That would be.
Sarah will take care of that for you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, one second. Alrighty. Uh, do, 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 do. Okay. So this, this actually is redundant now, but, um, these were just some notes to go along with that slide. You can take a look of these, the slides as well, because Sarah will post these, but jeez, these are all the things that Nick and I just said. Um, so just as a quick reminder, this is, this is what we're, we're looking at here. Um, you can see the added, um, temporary parking lot where someday hopefully there'll be a gymnasium. And this is the proposed academic building and the placement of that. Um, and then I wanted to show you the, the front of this. So where you see AMSA in the glass, that's actually, um, like an adhesive that's going to make it look like it's a little um, etched area that I, I think will be a nice, um, for the, for the lights that will be in there. Um, it will be really, I think, effective at night. There'll also be standalone letters along the top of that. You can see it in the photo. This is Advanced Math and Science Academy Charter School. Um, and so these are, you know, some of the drawings I, I thought that, that might interest you. Um, the details are, are filling in now. We've had meetings recently on doorknobs, door locks, bathrooms, all the toilets, hooks on the back of doors. It's, uh, the detail, uh, level that they're at now is really, um, uh, quite remarkable. And, um, you know, right down to the hinges on the doors and, and what kind of hinges they're going to use. So, um, it's really, it's really been an impressive, uh, process. Um, and these are just the, the, what the different sides of the building are going to be, um, the north, south, east and west side of the, the building. Um, the west elevation is where eventually the gymnasium will link up, um, onto the back of that, which is why, um, there aren't the extra windows and, and things there. Um, you can see the east elevation, that's the, the, um, the front entryway. And the same thing, if you look at the north elevation on the, the right-hand side, they expected the gymnasium, that there'll be some area that's going to kind of loop around the side there uh, for storage and, and things like that. So you can see there's, there, uh, there's no windows on that, on that side as well. But, um, just kind of interesting the way that, that they work out the details in the building and what, um, what they're looking at. Now you can see when you, when you look here and you look at the windows, you can see that there's a darker gray that runs, you know, from the top window to the bottom window. Um, and, and that really is just an indication of there's going to be a change um, in the way that the, the bricks are laid out. So they'll be, they're actually just brought out like another half an inch. Um, just to kind of give the, the building some character. Um, and so it doesn't look like it's, it's all completely, um, flat. And so that, that, I think that's going to be, um, effective. You'll see in the bottom, there's a dark, um, brick. We're not using that bumpy brick. We're using the, the flat black on the bottom, and then it's like a field gray, uh, brick on the outside of the building. When you come in through the, the very first, um, entry of the, of the door there, where there'll be a reception area, um, there'll be some, some decorative, they look like wooden pieces, but they're wooden slats. They're not actually, that's made out of a, a metal, but I've seen them. They look very much like wood. And once again, it's just to add, um, you know, a, a tone of professionalism and just something that, that stands out, um, when you, when you walk in the building. Nice, warm, a warm feeling there. In the front, there'll be, uh, the receptions office, there'll be a, an administrative um, office there. And we were able to, um, put in a nice size, um, conference room also there. Um, and so it won't look quite as you see when you look through these windows, you see the, the people standing there, um, inside the window. We actually decided to use that space a little bit more, um, I think it'll be much more effective, uh, for our, our purposes. And we added in a space there that will, um, be a nice meeting, um, area. So, um, and you can see the ideas on the, the windows and those windows will bump out a little bit, once again, to give some character um, to the, the outside of the, of the building. So I'm coming to the end of my, my report here and, um, I, I do want to welcome, um, Evan, class of 2016. I remember, um, seeing Evan when, when he was a, a senior, that's the year I was in counseling. And, um, got a chance to talk to him last Friday and, and want to welcome Evan onto, onto the, the board of trustees. We have, as Raoul said, talked about having someone, one of our alumni, um, serving. And so that's, that's great. Happy to have you, Evan. And then, um, I have had the opportunity to, to get to know Darren Rose. Um, I actually worked pretty closely with his daughter back when she, uh, I think she was class of like 2018. Um, but she was in UNICEF and she was one of my, my co-presidents back then. And, and Amy's a great young woman. And I, when I heard about Darren and he came forward as someone who wanted to help us with the fundraising, um, I was very, very excited about all the years and years of fundraising experience for, um, the university where he graduated from. And he has sat on, on boards, um, and done, done tremendous work. I know he's been a great support to Marcy, um, recently. So I do want to thank you for, uh, bringing Darren's name forward and, and approving him tonight. Um, and it's the June meeting that we say goodbye to, to board members who have been serving and, um, you know, I don't think we would be where we are today with the building without Nick. And so he served three years in the finance committee. Uh, you gotta, gotta love the, the endurance there, Nick. Um, and obviously the facilities task force. Uh, Nick has been a champion, um, for the school and, and for progress. And at times when we were all baffled by, by strange language of the construction world, um, Nick has been, you know, right there and a faithful member, always responsive, always helpful. Um, and, um, Nick's so grateful. I remember the first time I met you in the office and, um, and, and just knew that you were the kind of guy that, that we needed here. So thank you so much for your years of service and, um, I, I owe you, um, a great, a great deal for, for all you've done for me and, um, and for the school. Um, and Zach Prescott, his new married name. Um, Zach has been serving on the education committee. Um, he served his, his two one-year terms and, um, I get to meet with Zach every month and we talk about just different information he's gotten from the, um, from the staff. And, you know, he's been so well-balanced and really appreciate him. Um, he is a special, special member of the community. And, and when I first met Zach and he was a brand-new teacher and he was one of the most naturally gifted teachers that I have ever met. And just knew he had to come on staff and the kids love him and he's unique and fun. Um, and, uh, and, and just a, a great person to have had on the board. Very excited about Greg coming on as well, because I also had Greg and I, I actually taught Greg in my senior seminar class. Um, and I, I'm really happy. Greg's going to do a great job. And he knows AMSA from, you know, many different, um, areas. So I, I think that's awesome. And, you know, Jill's not leaving yet, so we're not saying goodbye to Jill. Um, but, but boy, Jill came up as, um, the parent rep, served there. Um, then she became a board member. And, um, and she has, you know, been with us for years and years. She certainly takes a lot of history um, with her as, as she heads on to the next stage of, of her life too. So um, really appreciate you Jill and, um, and for your honesty and, um, and for your integrity. I, I grateful for, for you. Upcoming events, we have graduate, graduation on June 9th. We will be featuring Mr. Naraki as our keynote speaker that evening. Um, it's going to be at 6:00 PM at Four Kicks, hoping for lovely weather. And then our last day of school for, for our students, it's a half a day on June 21st. We have the annual faculty and staff barbecue on the 21st of, uh, June at noon at the Hudson Elks. And then we have our golf tournament on August 14th. And um, I know that will be a great event and you will all have a wonderful time. And that's it. That's all folks. That is, that is all from me. Um, it's been, um, it's been quite an experience. And, uh, I, um, I wish you all well.
Thank you, Ellen. Um, the, the staff barbecue on the 21st, um, what's the, the time?
Noon.
Noon, sorry, I missed.
It's a half a day.
Hudson Elks, okay. Well, thank you, Ellen. The, your report is always the highlight of the meeting. Um, and thank you for everything you've done for us. I will allow myself a little bit of retrospection, but I'm going to leave that to the end of the meeting. Uh, if you don't mind. Uh, with that, faculty rep update, Zach, if you want.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, so, um, I have two updates today. Uh, one of which I think is, is very important. I'll do, I'll do that one. Um, second, the first one, just a, a quick note from some of the staff. Um, they would prefer a little bit more communication about events when they get changed or scheduled. Some of those things have not been updated on the calendar. Some of those things have come a little bit out of nowhere. Uh, recently, the event for the juniors meeting with alumni, um, was canceled a little bit last minute. And there was definitely some frustration about that, um, that I had heard and that they wanted passed on. Um, the other comment I have, and I'm going to read this one verbatim, because I think it, it words this very well. And then I have a little bit I'll add myself at the end. Um, it reads, "It feels like we are losing a few teachers this year to higher-paying positions. And I know this happened in my department, school counseling, last year. While we will likely never complete, compete with places like Lincoln Sudbury, Wayland, Natick, Wellesley, we need to be competitive with at least our sending schools. I believe that revamping the salary scale should be a priority for next year's contract negotiations. In my opinion, the floors for salary put us at a huge disadvantage and mean that other than an increase for cost of living, there is little movement for early career educators. I compared the salary of someone coming in with about two years of experience at the master's level, and a master's is required to be a school counselor, to our sending districts last year. Our pay would be $53,560." And then they include the rates for the sending districts below. Maynard for the 22, 23 school year was $59,455. Hudson is $58,056. That is for last year, 2020, and 2021. Um, they could not find the salary schedule for this year. Clinton is $58,121. And Marlboro is $64,631. And all of those are for two years of experience, masters. I'm going to add on to this, this is a concern. Um, I know I've heard this from a lot of teachers. We, we have lost some really good teachers this year. And it's not because they dislike the school. Everyone loves this school. It's a phenomenal place. Everyone is so happy to be here. But with the rise in cost of living, um, some of them just can't afford it. Uh, and I know I've, I've heard that concern from a lot of people that are staying, but are really concerned about that. You know, and I know very well, having been on this board and the meetings, like there's only so much we can do. There, there are buckets of money and when the bucket is dry, the bucket is dry. But this, this is a really big concern amongst the teachers because there is a point where it does not become financially viable to stay at the school, even if they want to stay for the great community, the great students, for the things that are here. Um, and it is definitely something, uh, that I wanted to bring to the board as a concern.
Yeah, I, I will add, um, on top of that, that I've met with a number of, of folks lately. Could you turn that one off? Um, teachers lately who have expressed this. Of course, we're very concerned with, um, with folks leaving and, and with the, um, the particular folks that are leaving as well. It, it, that there's some, starting to be some growing feeling of the money being vested into a, a building. Um, on a very tight budget and not into the teacher salaries. Um, I, I sent an email earlier this week to Raoul and Jill expressing my, my concerns around this as well, because the last thing AMSA wants to be is a new teacher mill. And that is oftentimes what happens in charter schools, because the, our budgets are so tight. Is that we, we hire young teachers, they're great, train them up, they're wonderful. And when they hit about year four to eight, they're gone. And then they just, and it's part of their business model. It's all they can afford and they, and they, they just keep going. Um, we have amazing teachers here who've been here for many, many years. They stay here because they love the place and they, I think, they would stay no matter what, right? It's their life. Um, but they're all in their 50s and 60s and we're really going to, going to have to really worry about their retirement, because they are the secret sauce. They are what holds the academics together in this school. And so this is really something to con, to consider, um, because they, they, they can't work forever. Um, and it's very, very concerning. Um, advertising to try to fill these folks. Um, in fact, Zach and I went over school spring today and I could tell him how many applications for each one of these positions. Three for the, for the middle school science position, right? Seven, nine. There was a day when they hired me, there was 168 applicants the year they hired me. So there's a national crisis with hiring and a local crisis. And it's going to be a crisis for us, because as we lose folks, because we can't afford to pay the salaries that other schools are, is going to be then known for us even higher, if this continues the way it is across the country. So I, I will leave that thought with you, um, as I continue to advocate for our teachers, which is something that, that I've been trying to do for years. And so it's going to be especially important when you look at the cost of this new building and balancing that, because many, many years ago, the board said, we were going to make this a priority. And, and we have, we started to close the gap. But all of a sudden with all the COVID money and the SOA money that's come into the, the district schools, they've been able to increase their salaries. And now the separation is coming back again. Um, and we've had very stable, um, situation at the school with, with staff. And I, I hope that continues, um, because this is, this is troubling for me, um, for sure.
Thank you. Anything else, Zach?
Thank you very much for adding that, Ellen. And I will just close off my report, um, by saying again, that it has been an absolute honor, uh, to serve on the board with you all. Um, and that I have appreciated being able to be here and be the voice of the teachers. Um and that I have appreciated being able to be here and be the voice of the teachers and that I wish all the best to Greg Theopson taking my position.
Thank you, Zach. Thank you for your service. Um my my quick reaction um to, I mean, obviously, we know this is a problem, you know, the salary and and we have talked about strategically in the long term, how do we do that? I know that doesn't alleviate anybody's concerns in the short term and it's not enough of an answer, so it's a challenge for us to find an answer. I would say that charter schools, and this is just my opinion, the charter schools are in a disadvantage when it comes to that, like like Ellen said, you know, district schools are able to raise their their salaries in a way that we can't because, you know, our budget is less under our control. Uh but also charter schools are known for being creative, so I think we have an opportunity to be creative and find ways to solve this problem. I I don't know what those ways are, but the the challenge for us in the board is to um start that spark to find that, you know, and we have stated that's what we want to do. So it's one of the focus in the next year. If you remember from the last discussion we had about strategic planning, that's one of the things that we have uh top of our list. And on the comment about the building, I I appreciate, yes, we're putting ourselves in a tight financial situation. Um I I shouldn't say tight, I should say we're taking a bit of more of a risk if we weren't going uh considering this project, which is why it's a very important decision we're making. But it's not necessarily taking out of an existing pocket, for lack of a better term, that would have gone to the teachers. That's why we have a capital campaign. That's why the success of the capital campaign is important. That's why, you know, we need to raise as much money as we can for everything. You know, the Cummings Grant was a good example, it's something that's a program, it's academic, it's not necessarily a capital campaign. But it really it allows us to provide good programming and good uh opportunities for our students while alleviating those funds that then hopefully we can add up to being able to do something for the teachers when the times come. So I know it's not a full answer, it's not a solution, but I'm just saying I agree and that we're we're gonna work on in solving this very important problem for us. And thank you for sharing that because I think that is important for for us to be reminded of that in every opportunity we have. Any other comments for Zach from anybody else? Or for our teachers?
It it is not common about teachers, but am I allowed to say something uh about Ellen's edict call?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Ellen's last board meeting. And I just wanted to say something publicly. Many of us have acknowledged that in private, but I just wrote up something quickly so that I can actually thank Ellen for this. And Ellen, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Ellen, for everything that you have done for AMSA. There were several challenges that we all faced together, pandemic, nobody knew what was coming. And kind of literally things were thrown at you and you faced them with grace, patience, and courage. It was difficult for everyone at times, but you stayed at the forefront of AMSA with all you got. There were victories and failures with regards to union um negotiations, building construction, capital campaign, you name it, Disney. Um but you accepted them all with poise and dignity. Congratulations on your retirement and we will all miss you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Padma, you're a good friend.
You and anybody else can always have the floor in this meeting to thank Ellen for everything she's done. Thank you for doing that, Padma. I'll save mine for later. Parent rep, Nora.
Okay, um maybe it's the end of the year, I got a lot of feedback, so um tried to somewhat organize it a little bit, um and then, you know, some are are just sort of one-offs. Um but I would say, kind of what I've been hearing more recently, sort of a summary of some different concerns. Um and the best way to say it is kind of some parents are feeling like AMSA is just a less fun and engaging place to study as it has been before. Um and it's uh my husband and I have actually had this conversation as well, I guess not really before because we've only known it for a few years, but um it's funny, I'm in North Carolina at a conference right now um on grad students and, you know, a big part of it is about, you know, the feeling of belonging and fostering that feeling. Um and so some of that, you know, parents have said they feel like is missing from AMSA. Um and and at this age of the middle school and high school, it can be sort of that fun and engaging thing. And people are aware, there's been spirit weeks and field days um by, you know, um kind of be beyond that, there hasn't been much. And then um along that vein too, I was hearing from some of the senior parents um about just a little maybe disappointment with some of the senior events. I think one was communication about it, but they felt like there's too much reliance perhaps on the P T O for um organizing the activities that happen for students that fall in this vein, like either senior year celebrations or some of the the more fun activities like field day and things like that. Um and so some parents have said they really thought the school and administrators should kind of be more involved themselves in some of this. Um I guess along that vein, I did also hear um people really thought AMSA could do more to showcase like the clubs and the teams and and the activities they're doing. Um especially to an external audience, you know, a lot of photos of things happening at the school during the school day, like again, like a field day or spirit week, make it out to social media, but it's really like the parents sharing information themselves um about some of the accomplishments and like the AMSA chat on Facebook and things like that. And you know, kind of is that outward showcasing does mean a lot to people. Um and also mentioned, you know, they see teachers. Um no, and and it's just Ellen's comment, there are things for sure, but it's more of these after-school weekend activities that I've been hearing from families, they don't feel like get focused as much. Um and they'd love to see, you know, more administrators just attending and supporting those in general. Um and then along that vein, I did hear from a parent, um you know, and this was a shame to hear, they just concerns about the heavy homework burdens, especially from students who have a learning disability and and so sometimes the homework time takes a little bit longer and this child in particular, they had to drop their after-school sport because it was just too much to do both the homework and um the extracurricular activity. And you know, because these extracurriculars are also very meaningful experiences. And again, when we get back to school being engaging, um you feel connected and, you know, fun. Um it was kind of hard to hear that. Um kind of separate from that piece, in general, just some challenges of trying, when your student's having difficulty in the classroom, like connecting with all the different teachers and trying to pull that information together versus one person can just be a lot of work and challenging. Um and they felt like, you know, information isn't always up-to-date and as quickly available on plus portals as it would be helpful for parents. Um and maybe having some other type of progress reports or more comments other than just a grade, um especially, you know, if that grade is not an A um is helpful, um you know, because a lot of that, you know, one-letter grade may be meaningless. Um and just trying to kind of navigate that. Um a couple logistical things, I did hear from a parent about just bus cost concerns. Um and just wondering, you know, why the price is so high, does AMSA cover any of those costs? Um you know, especially for this parent, you know, it's significantly different for the Hudson bus versus like a town right next door to Hudson. Um and it was just a lot for them to pay. Um in that case, there's no other option as well. Um so kind of just some questions about, you know, what is the true cost of the bus? You know, is there anything else that AMSA could do to lower the cost? Um on the logistics as well, just looking ahead towards next year, um I think some parents just continue to be concerned about the older buildings and the ventilation and diseases and sicknesses that come in winter. Um you know, when parents like, we're a science school, I feel like we should be able to come up with something. Um so yeah, just a few of the challenges that continue to come with having the older buildings. Um and I think that covers it. Um and then heard some great feedback, a wonderful feedback about the teachers, um how appreciative um people have been um of that, you know. One of the seniors said, you know, they felt like their their student, one of the senior parents, their student wouldn't have had such a successful sort of college application process and kind of period if it wasn't for the education at the AMSA. Um so definitely, you know, some positive feedback as the year is ending as well. Um and that is what I've been hearing as we wrap up the school year. Any questions? All right, and then some of these, obviously, you know, the one asking about the bus cost, I, you know, I'm gonna will mention she can reach out to Leanna to, you know, learn more about that. Um but some of these are just sort of general. You know, there's not really someone to specific to reach out to when people feel like, um you know, AMSA could do more, you know, to really just be a more engaging place for students.
All right. Any questions or comments for Laura from anybody?
I guess I just have one comment on on that aspect. I mean, I feel that there's a lot of information on the website and we're sent and used we're sent something from Mike Finkel once a week and we have all these links and I'm finding myself looking at all the pictures. And so I'm just wondering, is I are parents wanting more of that? I mean, or, you know, what exactly, I I feel like.
Like a lot of, like, maybe it's more of the stuff that happens outside of school, so you don't always hear as much about maybe like the sports teams or the other after-school clubs and what they're doing. Um those types of things. So a lot of it is the the activities during the day. Um you know, so for example, there was the recent drama play and I think um like the Instagram page, there was, you know, a flyer promoting it, but um no pictures of like what a successful production that actually maybe showed. Um you know, the, you know, pictures from the actual production or things like that.
Yeah.
I just want to add a quick comment to that as well. I know that even going back to when I was a student, you know, back in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, that was also an issue when in regards to sporting events. Um you know, whether it be attendance or, you know, declarations of it in the school the following day, so forth, sends out to parents. Um can definitely be a big initiative moving forward to get people involved about that. And the students definitely get more excited when their people start talking about it, so can boost morale in that space.
Yeah, or if their picture gets featured on, you know.
Exactly.
Something like that, yeah, it's exciting for them.
It's not. Anything else for Laura? All right, that would be the parent rep update. So moving on to chair business, a really quick update on the family and staff survey. Uh we're not gonna be reporting on the results just yet because as you may remember on our last board meeting, we identified the fact that the the family surveys hadn't gone out, um at least not in in full, because I've received mine, but some other parents reported that they hadn't seen that. Um so I believe that problem was fixed, so we extended the deadline. And um I don't recall exactly the deadline, but we're we're just going through the results right now, so uh just wait until one of the future meeting, I don't know if it'll be the next one, but maybe the the one following after that, where we will be going over those results. Um the next update is pretty quick as well. One of the things that we normally do in June is a board self-assessment. And that includes some of you that are coming off the board because you've been doing this for a while and and your feedback is helpful. Uh you may have noticed you, I hope you received an email from Board on Track today. Uh that was me generating the self-assessment. So for those of you that haven't gone through, this is something the Board on Track gives us, which is a very helpful tool that basically asks us to rate ourselves on how we're doing as a board to process-wise and governance-wise and focusing on the things that matter. So it's a self-assessment. So you get to answer for yourself and for everybody else on the board. So keep an eye out for that email that should have gone out today. Uh hopefully, we'll um have enough participation so we can talk about that in our in our upcoming meeting. But I just wanted to call it out, um as something that we normally do in 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 June-July timeframe. Uh especially for those of you moving out of the board, that's a good opportunity to share your feedback before you move on. So that's that. Um and then the last thing I wanted to add to the chair business is the schedule of our next board meetings. So we don't have them, um normally, Sarah was reminding me that when we do our annual report, which is due in July, we include the whole year's calendar, but they're not requiring that, at least for this year. So we don't have to define the whole year's worth of board meetings, but I think particularly based on the discussion we just had about the decision that we have to make about the building, we should at least have an agreement today on what are we gonna do about the next board meeting. So normally in the summer, we combine July and August to try to, you know, we there's nothing that says we have to meet every single month and the summer is a good time to be more efficient with the meetings and and reduce the number of meetings we have. So but we do need to meet in July to approve the annual report. So the guidance that I'm getting from Sarah, and you can correct me or complete my statement if if I get it wrong, is that there's a lot of data that goes into the annual report that is not available until after June thirtieth, but that annual report is due in July. So we want to give as much time to Sarah and the team to put that annual report together without missing the deadline, which means that the ideal time to meet in July would be towards the end of July. So if we're gonna stick to a Thursday meeting, I'm going to suggest July twenty-seventh as our next board meeting. Uh it could be a light agenda, just focusing on the annual report and then whatever else we have in our our board calendar or any action items from today. But that's uh what I'm suggesting for July. Did I get that right, Sarah? Would that work?
Yes. Would you also like me to just put together a a calendar similar to what we had last year for the board and the committees and then they can take it and make changes to it?
Yeah, that'd be very helpful. Yeah, having something to start is definitely a good, makes it easier on us. Uh but then the question is, do we meet in August or now that we know that the most important vote that we're gonna make in August is not gonna uh be needed in August? So uh before we make that decision, I would say, from what I understand, the discussion we just had, meeting in September makes more sense. There's nothing that says that we can't have that vote in a special meeting, so you know, whenever we're ready to vote, we can just call a meeting as long as we comply with the media law requirements.
You may also be maybe having multiple meetings, you don't know.
So what I was gonna say is that after that July meeting, since we're meeting towards the end of the month, we could skip August and then meet in September. And I'm throwing out September fourteenth being four days after that Sunday, just in case we didn't get to it in any other meetings, we can use that meeting for that vote. But I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there. I'm I'm not sure if anybody has an opinion.
So I vote that we skip in August. My calendar availability is definitely looking tight in August and so that's my personal preference. I'd like the July end and then early September or mid-September or whatever else that you're suggesting.
Okay. And I would say be in the summer, the both of those could be remote. Is that generally a good idea for people? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so. So I'm gonna say July twenty-seventh, the next one, and then the following one, September fourteen. And again, if we have a different timeline from the discussions on facilities and and finance for making the decision, we can have a special meeting just for that. So.
Did you say that both these meetings are going to be remote?
Yes. You ready to go with that? All right, so I just wanted to get that out of the way so we can at least have clarity on our schedules um as we walk out of the meeting today. With that, we can move into committee reports. So Roger, you wanna take both finance and education?
Sure, I'll educate, I'll do education first, it's really easy, we have not met, so um we we don't have, no, no report from education committee. Um finance, we had a very, going on to finance, we had a very productive discussion first. We we approved the uh final contract for the Loop Road approval, Loop Loop Road to for AMSA, the uh or the aim is this is to start construction uh the day after school starts, it stopped, suddenly it's June twenty-second, we're still waiting. I believe stopped, I believe it's June 22nd, we're still waiting. Uh, Ellen had, there were still some dates that we were waiting for Marlboro and other people to approve so we could actually do it, but that, that contract was in the area of $750,000. Um, so that, that was the first piece out of finance and that was within our approval authority to do, so we did not have to bring that back to the board for approval. Um, well, second is we really started discussing in detail the process for being able, what data we would need to make a decision on the, uh, building project going forward. And, uh, you know, the key, the key pieces of data that we need are our total cash position at the end of the school year, um, our expected fundraising, the, oh, the actual number that we know, the, uh, the remaining loan that we're able to draw, um, and a couple other things that we're still working on, you know, the expect, what our expected capital expenditures will be for the next couple of years. Uh, and how much money that we do, we need to set aside for the uh, existing operating of the school and existing capital projects. And as part of that, we reached, we decided uh, uh, based on what we know that we should have, that we should keep three months of operating expenses set aside for the operation of the school and our existing capital infrastructure needs. So that money is therefore not available to spend on new building. And so our next steps forward, um, our June finance meeting, which is June 13th, we will be focused on taking a deeper dive into the existing capital infrastructure of the school to understand what needs to be done and when. And then in the July timeframe, after the close of the school, after schools, eh, after the fiscal, fiscal year closes, then we'll find out from the state how much these, the city districts have given, have provided for us, as well as just closing the books on the year that will then be able to have a great picture on the total cash available. And, and then in July timeframe, we'll be looking in more detail to say, well, how much money can we, how much money can we afford to spend on the building? Which is the big question. So we, we got, we had a very productive discussion in finance covering those topics and more, more, two more, uh, more, more discussions to be had to refine our, ref- refine our framework.
All right, thank you, Roger. Any questions for finance? I'm sure the next few meetings will be very exciting as we get ready for that big decision. All right, um, Sheila, if you are available to do so, can you give us a governance committee report? Sheila, you on mute? Are you with us?
Yep, sorry, I was having issues on muting on my phone, sorry about that. Um, yep, the governance committee, um, met, as Raul said earlier, we finalized um, a bunch of documents and I am very appreciative to the committee's, um, input on those for onboarding, um, for the guidelines for faculty and parent rep, for our ideal board candidate and what we're looking for. So, um, it might make sense actually, Raul, at a future meeting, just to do um, a bigger presentation for the group on that, um, so that everyone's on the same page, especially as we move forward and needing to recruit some new board members, um, just knowing everyone being on the same page as to what we're looking for, where our needs are and all of that. But, um, we did have a very productive, um, meeting this month doing that. And, um, like I said, it might make sense to present that at, I mean, today was not the night because we had a lot on the docket, but, um, you know, we've been doing good work there and we'll need everyone's help, kind of in your circles recruiting and coming up with ideas for, um, potential board members, so. I don't know if any of the governance committee members have anything to add to that.
Well, just to brag about the fact that we enter our goals for next year on Board on Track, we invite other committees to do the same. But we'll talk more about that later. All right, thank you, Sheila.
You're welcome.
And last but not least, I don't know more, I know you gave the, we usually do this where we report on the campaign first, but then development in general separately. I don't know if you wanna add anything to what you already said.
Yeah, sure, um, just a quick update. Um, I don't know if anybody saw it on Facebook today, but the alumni group is planning a reunion, like a fifth-year reunion, but for three classes, the 2016, 27, and 2018, it's gonna be on June 29th at Apex. So it's nice to see that stuff coming back. Thanks to Mark for working with that committee of alums, um. And then we did actually touch real quickly on our strategic plan pieces, um, but I will put them into Board on Track. Um, but we talked about, obviously, capital campaign, that's a big part of our development committee meetings right now. Um, but we talked about building, um, a new marketing plan to support the building plan and the capital campaign. We talked about focusing on recruitment, getting more people onto the development committee because we are tiny and we have the potential to be mighty, but we could use a few more people. Um, and also talked about setting our annual goal, um, kind of breaking down the capital campaign to annual chunks um, that can be sort of, the in-development committee can engage with, and we're gonna do that after, um, in our July meeting. Um, once we have sort of a little better picture of, of what's going on, um. Yeah, that's it, those are the big things.
Thank you, Maura. Any comments from Maura, any questions? Anything else anybody wants to bring up before we wrap up? How are we doing on time, Mr. Time Cops?
We are currently 52 minutes ahead of schedule.
I think we were giving 10 minutes to every agenda item, which, you know, made it sound like a, like a very long thing, but we do need 10 minutes. Um, I think I heard one, did you capture any action items, Sarah?
Yes.
What do we got?
Uh, they're both for me, actually, I think. Um, well, the last one was for, uh, building the draft calendar. And let's see if I can find it here.
And I'm gonna add, do something that, while you look at that, that Sheila mentioned that maybe it makes sense for the governance to share, the onboarding, um, well, basically all the documents that we have been working on, try to find a way to summarize that and and present to everybody, which would be timely having a couple of new board members.
Can I add something to the next agenda as well?
Sure.
One of the things that we talked about in our last capital campaign committee meeting, Marcy shared with us was the life cycle of a major gift and I would love to just have, or maybe take the five to 10 minutes for the capital campaign to really kind of go over. It's basically a one cheater, but just to kind of talk about the life cycle of a major gift and I think it's really good information for all of us as board members to have. Um, just to get a better understanding of the fact that it doesn't happen overnight and sort of understanding the process, I think would be really helpful.
Yeah, thanks, Maura. I think particularly the timeline of relationship building that is in advance of the gift is something that I think is helpful for everybody to hear about because I, I don't think I understood how long it takes to build a relationship that culminates in a gift and it's worth sort of bearing that in mind.
Was there anything else, Sarah? I know you're looking at your notes.
I know.
Yeah, we don't, as, as long as you capture it, which I'm sure you did, we'll
All right.
We'll have that, um, but yeah, we'll try to remember for governance, that governance report from that for the next board. Any other potential, um, agenda items for next meeting, which again will be at the end of July?
Uh, just the, um, well, the annual report vote.
Okay. Excellent.
So are we gonna do, are you gonna do survey results in July or did you wanna save that for September?
So I'm gonna say save to September because I'm not sure if the survey task force will be ready by July, but.
I think you're gonna be very busy in September. Also, I think that we usually do put the results in the annual report.
Oh, well, so I guess we should. I'll put it in the agenda and then we'll, yeah, especially because it's the end of July, I think we have enough time.
We also typically, for the survey, sometimes we'll report the, um, the raw numbers in the, in the first meeting, then the comments, the introspective comments in the later meeting is something we've done in the past as well.
All right, confirm with Dawn, but yeah, we can put it in the agenda for July. All right, anything else? So I, I do wanna say one thing before we wrap up, like I said earlier. And, you know, I could get in trouble for this, but I'm, I'm gonna take that risk. Um, because I, I know Ellen would prefer that we don't talk about her and her accomplishments and everything she's done, but I'm not gonna do that directly. I'm, I'm actually gonna talk about my experience in the board. I joined this board, uh, six years ago, which I always felt was a very lucky time to be joining this board because I knew the school had been going through a bit of a transition point and something that, you know, everybody was happy and, and with a lot of hope to the future because of what had recently happened on the board. So I felt I'm so lucky coming into this school at this specific amount of, uh, moment in time because it's, it's a great time to be in the school. And I give a lot of credit to the leadership team that was put together for doing that and I think the board made a great choice of choosing, uh, our executive director and assistant executive director to lead the school, uh, and, uh, you know, Dr. Lewis and Ms. Lindsay. And since then, as Pat Majer already summarized, a lot has happened. And we had, if I remember my first board meetings, there was a lot of talk about that transition, but there's also a lot of, uh, talk about the better climate that the school was at, how people were excited about the future of the school, how people were participating in building out the future of the school. And building then became the next important word that everybody was talking about. You know, we were in the middle of litigation with a land landlord, which I think, uh, our leadership team took a very direct personal ownership of building up that relationship so we could resolve that situation, which is eventually what happened, which led us to make the decision and the big investment and, and, and basically transitioned the school into being a, a landowner ourselves and to having, but, you know, first we bought one building, then we bought the other two. That sounds very easy to summarize, but it took years to get to that point. Uh, and then once, once we thought we had really made a great success and we were getting ready to move on and, you know, continue to build out the campus and whatnot, COVID hit. And then another challenge that brought up to the school, every single school in the country had to deal with that challenge and, you know, AMSA rose to the challenge and once again, thanks to the leadership in this school. Uh, so we had to mix COVID with the construction work and starting a capital campaign, which is something that the school had never done. So building new capabilities is always something challenging in any organization. I think for a school and a charter school, that's even more so. You know, I always thought we've never raised the kind of money. We, we never had to apply for grants for just things that are gonna be critical and the critical path for us achieving our mission. And, you know, the word never, uh, I don't think scared anybody, it actually helped us, uh, face those challenges head-on and, and be a good, you know, put in all, all of our mind into that. And I do feel in the last six years, the school has become stronger. So, like I said, I, I don't wanna get in trouble with Ellen for, uh, giving her all the credit for all of that, but I do wanna thank Ellen and I wanna thank Anders and I wanna thank the leadership team in the school. I wanna thank all the teams that have come together behind them because they proved why we have the secret sauce that we have, that they prove why I'm always hopeful about the future of the school because it's when everybody comes together on their common vision, when everybody believes that we're working towards our, our common values, which by the way, I don't think we could have articulated our common values six years ago. You know, now they roll off our tongue and, you know, we have them on our walls and all that, but that's something that came out of the efforts and leadership that Anders and Ellen have brought together. So, thank you, Ellen. Um, sorry for doing this, but I, I will not stop being thankful for everything you do, you have done and you'll continue to do for the school. I know the school is very close to your heart and it will continue to be so, and we are stewards to your legacy, which is one of the biggest challenges that I have as a trustee. And I hope I can live up to, to that legacy by maintaining it alive and keeping it going successful for many years to come.
Thank you, Raul, I appreciate the kind and supportive words.
Thank you, Ellen. I don't think I can say better what Raul said, he's pulled out all the thoughts that would run through my head. The only thing I'll add is I, I knew your impact before I felt it in this tangible way because I'd seen it in the schools and with my kids and so sort of it felt really good to see that continued effort and of course, Dr. Lewis in the same way. So thank you for steering the, the school, the team in the way that you have to bring us to where we are today.
Thank you. You've got some great kids, Samini.
Thank you.
There'll be two, I'll remember always. I too promise not to say anything, Ellen, but I'm going to.
Hmm.
I know, I'm just gonna say one
Have to work with me for
One, one quick I, I have worked under all the EDs here, every one of them. And there is no one who could have brought us through these, the worst years, best years, the worst years that we had to go through and these trials and tribulations that we went through. And you had the, you had the secret sauce to get us through that. You really did, your leadership skills that brought through your heart and your grit and everything else. And you were there every day for every one of us. That's it.
Love you, Sarah. Oh, good, happy times ahead. And, um, so yeah, we, we can adjourn, thank you.
Any, anything else before we adjourn to executive session? All right, I'm gonna take a motion to adjourn to executive session, session with the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining as an open, doing so in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the board. The board will not reconvene after executive session. I would like to invite Mike Noraki, Leanna McLaren, and Joe Bartulus to join us into executive session.
Motion to adjourn.
Who is that?
Samini.
Right. Can I second this, Sheila?
Sheila, second.
Oh, okay, I thought you, I thought you made the motion. Okay, so it was Samini and Sheila. Okay. All right, votes. Bella?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Raul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Samini?
Yes.
And Zachary?
Yes.
Motion passes, uh, we'll see you on the other side. Thank you, everybody that watched the recording. And we'll see you again in July.